All the special media, the Lake Shore Town, uh, to order this. Do the invocation, come in room caps. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings you bestowed on entities that exist. Guidance and pray in your name. Help us and guide us. Amen. Edge?
Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item of business is the adoption of, of our agenda. And commissioners have the agenda in front of you. Is there any additions, deletions, agenda?
Uh, I understand the item four, the no fishing signs is something town manager's policy.
Mm-hmm.
And therefore it's not something we need to discuss. When we remove that item.
Second?
Second.
There'll be discussion, there being none. Say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Changes before we have a adopt the agenda as amended.
Agenda as amended.
Second? Second by Commissioner Moore. Ever say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Have an agenda. So first item moving through any agenda is public comment. Is there anyone in the public, uh, here this morning like to make a comment? Whether you've signed up at this point or not, I don't see not, then we will go ahead and, uh, agenda, we'll get right into the meat of it. FY two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget review. The commissioners have all ized version of budget. Uh, we've had several days to go through it. Uh, the party of our agenda going forward would be, uh, questions. We have staff here. Light information, detail about that. So we have Sam Carr, our finance director, who I understand it, the author of the version, let's say that. He's the creator, uh, caretaker. Gone through, as I would recognize a change in our town manager position. Welcome, uh, recognize our new inter Baldwin, far end of the table.
Thank you, Mayor.
Clean Sam and, and, uh, get through hopefully final budget review. I guess we're scheduled next week on the twenty-sixth. Final, uh, hearing, if you will, on the budget and the adoption of the ordinance that would take us into two thousand eighteen, nineteen. Okay. Uh-huh.
Uh, but our discussion part of the meeting about a need
Yes.
to present that.
Yes.
And we didn't
But we'll go ahead administratively and we'll, uh, we'll do that. So,
Right.
um, now in the absence of a more detailed, uh, agenda of how we go through the budget review, I guess we have some staff. Anita, if you wanna come forward and address your, your part of, uh,
Right now, we've got So what we're wanting to flat rate amount.
Not on here. Thing that we're paying now.
Uh, we will
cent. Then on the
Not just talking public works. We're talking, you have fire folks on call, you have police still, or just Okay, okay. Total, we would need budget for that and that department or
Um, what is that total?
It'd be about the same.
Yeah, public works and then
Five, eleven, and that
And one final revision of all that discussion. Hydro.
Thirty-seven, seven fifty.
So how has that been?
Uh, they, four hours at regular pay, uh, regular rate.
Regular. If they're called out or they automatically being on call, they get
That's right.
Right.
But it's only for Saturday and Sunday and we had to call around Monday through Friday to see who we could catch that would be willing to take the call.
So let's see, we got here.
That's right.
Okay.
That we're obviously gonna not pay it that way. We're here. This, and this is the difference. This, this is in addition to what we're already paying.
That's in addition to what we're already paying.
So it's not any reduction.
That's right. Let's see. I put it right here. Um, it's currently forty-five ninety-one plus benefits and it's gonna increase to seventy-five ninety-six thirty-three. Yeah, plus the benefits.
Yeah. Yeah, so you do have reduction, but the increase is greater than the reduction. So this seven thousand total is the net increase.
That seventy-five ninety-six thirty-three, uh, for the public works, that would have to have benefits put on that. The seventy-five ninety-six thirty-three plus benefits. I did that in a hurry last night and an increased amount of, uh, three thousand twenty-one eighty-six plus benefits for, uh, hydro. So we're looking at actually seventy-five ninety-six thirty-three and seventy-six thirty-eight, uh, fifty-eight for the hydro. And then the benefits on that.
Now wait a minute.
If you want a total.
I'm confused. It was seventy-six hundred total, but now you're saying each department seventy-six hundred?
Okay, uh, let me, let me go back and see if I can explain. The, uh, on-call right now for the employees and just the three that rotate is four thousand five hundred ninety-one twenty-two plus their benefits.
Which only covers Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's, uh, gonna increase to seven thousand five ninety-six thirty-three plus benefits.
That's the difference.
But it's gonna
The same net difference is this thirty-seven.
That's right.
Right. So it's thirty-seven fifty.
And, uh, that's already in the budget, that forty-five ninety-one twenty-two. So I'm asking for three thousand five eleven plus benefits on those three.
And what we're getting for that is, uh, on-call for seven days rather than two.
Rather than, yeah, that's right. Cause right now I'm, uh, giving them two hours Saturday, two hours Sunday at regular rate. So we're already paying them four. Um,
Now you're gonna give them five and basically an extra hour a week.
We're gonna give them seven.
Oh, seven days.
Uh-huh. We're, we're gonna give them seven hours versus four.
That's the difference.
They're gonna get three more hours pay and work seven days.
At the regular rate, right.
That's right.
So, so do we have a, today, a prepared policy in writing for us to adopt?
Uh-huh.
Or, or, or we're gonna do that later?
And, uh, however y'all wanna do. This is what we did. We just, uh, right here where it says on-call is defined as that time when an employee must carry a pager or other communication device and must respond immediately to calls for service. We added that. Then it says the talent, uh, any talent employee eligible to earn overtime compensation will be guaranteed. I did away with the two hours of straight time pay for each, uh, day and moved it to seven and did it for the week.
The, the, the point is, is we don't have in front of us a prepared policy to review and adopt and say that this is the new policy. And, and that's what we need.
Yeah. Uh, I had just sent that, which was a revision to what we presented last month.
Right. So do we wanna put this on our July tenth council agenda?
Well, I guess we would.
Adoption of that set
We could go ahead and set the budget and then we can do the policy on July tenth. Yeah. I think that, that would be
Yeah, yeah.
My only question is, we're getting four now. To go to five, I can understand, but why seven days when you're only gonna be called out maybe one day?
What we was trying to do is where they get two hours Saturday, two hours Sunday, uh, we was trying to get away from the policy saying we're paying you, uh, this callback time for specific days, Saturday, Sunday holidays. We wanted to where it's gonna show up.
Isn't the concept of this, you know, the, 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 uh, compensation for being on-call? It isn't the compensation for the, uh, adjustment to their, uh, personal schedule commitment to be here in the event they are on-call. I mean, it isn't, it isn't an anticipation of, uh, being called. It's the, it's the commitment in your personal schedule to be available for call. Isn't that, isn't that what we're paying for?
Yeah, yeah. We are, but we were going four. We, there's five days person average work, so go five, which is an increase over what we get now. Now we're going to seven.
But we're asking
That's a sixty percent.
Well, it is, but we are asking them to be on-call during the weekend, seven days a week. I mean, it is a sixty percent, but it is a sixty percent increase in the amount of on-call, um, we're requ- we're requiring, right?
Not quite sixty. Cause over the weekend, you've got forty-eight hours. You're already working eight hours a day during the week, so that leaves sixteen. So you're picking up sixty hours of
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying, there's a lot of weeks you don't get called out.
But you've still got the commitment to have the, to have the possibility to be called. I've been, I've had, I've done this for my whole career and it's not it's, and you have too.
I have.
And it's not fun being responsible and having to carry that thing and interrupt whatever it is you've got going on. So.
I, I still say the cleanest, I still say the cleanest way is a flat rate, but that idea was rebuffed last council and that's fine. We'll move on. Uh, but we need to, we need the actual policy you want to, us to approve for the policy manual.
I don't mind doing a flat rate, but I just gotta be able to, uh, pro-rate that flat rate.
Yeah.
Uh, an amount like, say if it's a hundred and fifteen dollars, cause I had thought about, let's do twenty dollars Saturday, twenty dollars Sunday and fifteen dollars Monday through Friday. So there's several ideas. I just need guidance on work councils.
But this, you've researched it, David, you've researched it and looked at what other towns do and compared it to what we've been doing up to this point. And this is your recommendation?
Yes, this is very comparable to what other towns are doing.
Uh-huh.
The whole issue with it is, is, was this way before I came is you only have somebody that's available Saturday and Sunday.
Right.
Monday night, Tuesday night, you, you have a main water break or a road wash out or whatever. And the police is trying to call and get a hold of somebody and they can't get anybody to answer the phone.
Yeah.
You know.
The way I enter the phone.
Or whatever, you know, uh, there's always been an argument, from what I understand in the past, well, I'm not gonna call that.
Yeah.
You know, and I wanna eliminate that. If, 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 if it's your week, you're expecting to be here.
Day, day, day in time where everybody has caller ID, we need something.
Much like Dean does, he sees John Kilby come up on his phone.
Just like John said, if, if you, you may not get called that week.
Yeah.
But you're expected to be ready if you do.
Yeah.
And if you're in a on-call status, you should
You can't go to beach that week. You can't. You gotta stay within a certain, uh,
Yes, sir.
uh, radius, I guess.
So, so basically those employees are obligated and what we're saying, this is how much we think it's worth for you to be obligated to the town for that week.
They're gonna answer the phone this time.
And, uh, the job descriptions do say may require rotation and standby status for callback responsibilities. I know that it came up, uh, at the meeting.
In, in this, Anita, we might want to draft some consequences for if you, you know, somebody is on, is subject to call, they get paid that hundred dollars. And they don't respond, that, you know, what, what our, uh, policy is at that point.
Um, and we got that too.
Already?
Yeah, it, it says right here, if an employee fails to respond to a reasonable call for emergency service either special routine, the employee shall be subject to disciplinary actions up to and including dismissal by the appointed authority.
Okay, good. So you just send that already? That's
Uh-huh. It's already part, part of our
That, on July sixth, you bring that to us. That policy on July sixth.
Okay. Does that and present it while
You're not good with, Vaughn. You're not good with it.
Well, I, I just was raised in a different culture. When the phone rings, I go. I don't get paid for being called. I understand five days. I just have a little tough seven days.
But you, you and I become an antique.
I guess so. I just
There'll, there'll be an argument with that. I'm, I'm glad you didn't include me in that statement. So Anita, I, I've got a question.
I just, I get it written up, but I just
Mr. Mayor, if I may
People don't answer phone calls. I don't have
I've got a question. So, so what we're saying with this policy is that you're anchored to the town, uh, that week and you have to come in when called. And then your pay is based on, uh, seven hours times the rate we pay you at regular pay.
That's right.
So it's gonna be a different amount for each employee, but it's based on their regular hour pay. So they're at work that week, but they're at home.
Mm-hmm.
And so the number we're using is seven times their regular pay for an hour. Okay.
So as that salary increases due to COLA or, or other, uh, uh, adjustments,
Mm-hmm.
then this on-call is going to increase exponentially over time.
I can get y'all
Pay is going to increase exponentially.
No, we, we understand that. We just, we just need to see the call.
Yeah. And I thought if you want me to, um, get you some costs, you know, like total benefits for five hours, I don't mind doing that.
You don't have to do it. I already see the writing on the wall, so.
All right. Any, uh, any other questions or areas you wanted Anita to cover? If not, Anita, nice job and, and, uh, we'll, we will go ahead and include, uh, some numbers in the budget and you come back on, uh, in July at our meeting and we'll take up the policy.
I'll have to write up a resolution like we did before.
You can work with Shannon on that.
Yes, we can do it.
And that's un- under what? Article five of the personal policy manual?
It is, Article five, section eleven.
Right, got it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, um, what's So, so with our, uh, procedure now going forward, we've taken, Anita, uh, you wanna just go back into the budget as it's been presented to us? We'll kinda go through it. Uh, Sam's here, the departments as we get to them, other departments are here. We can ask questions. Shannon's here. Um, so I, you know, we'll, we'll just, if that's okay. I mean, we don't have a, we don't have a particular agenda on this, but
Maybe just take a
Presentation or
Take a section at a time.
Yeah.
And, uh, and we'll just go through as it, maybe each of us have questions about different things.
Yeah.
Arm out one at a time and then go to the next.
Let's do it. So we got
From, from the back, yeah.
Is that good for you, Stephen?
Hey, that's perfect.
All right. So
Where we started.
Let's start with the revenue side. We got two sheets here. One is expenses, one is revenues. So let's go through the revenues, um, and, and see if we can get through that, if that, and then we can hit the expenses.
Well, first of all, we're working maybe off of two different versions.
Okay.
Uh, we were handed a version on our table this morning,
Mm-hmm.
which, of course, I haven't had time to review and, but the one dated the nineteenth that I was given, uh, is the one I have reviewed.
Uh-huh.
Uh, so we all may be on different ones. I don't know. Sam?
The, the new version, um, I, I got, uh, Stephen visited me yesterday.
Hmm.
So that's why we have a new version. The, the difference, Stephen, is, uh, we included the part-time salaries for the public works. And, uh, we did the revenue adjustments for the lodge on Lake Lure. Uh, we put a placeholder in there for a thousand dollars. So that's basically the only
Okay, that's just the opposite on the part-time. The part-time was not to be public works, cause they're gonna be Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay.
All right. So, so it sounds like there's just minimal
Right, okay.
So if we made like I did notes on the original one, we can refer to that as we go through the, the new one. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yep.
Good.
Thanks, good.
All right. So let's, uh, let's start then with the, um, with the revenue sheets and, uh, we begin with the general fund and we've, uh, now based, as I understand it, based on the discussions we had at the last, uh, budget workshop, hearing, whatever. Uh, we made some, uh, adjustments down in what had been proposed, uh, by the town manager. And, um, we reduced, as I recall, the proposed, uh, increase in the tax, property tax rate uh, from, I think it was forty cents or forty
Forty, forty-five.
Down to thirty, thirty-six, uh, which is where we are, Sam, right now. And then we've broken that out, which I think is a, is a good way to look at it. Uh, in, in the note here, twenty-three point nine for the municipal, nine for the fire. And now we have, um, followed, I think what we decided we would do is, is strip out three cents for capital, right?
Actually, four, yeah.
Hmm?
Four cents for capital.
Okay.
I, I included another penny for capital.
Okay.
Let's let's make, uh, comparison to where we were last year. So municipal, as it is now, the, the current year is, how much, Sam?
Uh, twenty-three point nine.
That's for, uh, seventeen, eighteen?
Uh, this is eighteen, nineteen.
I know, but I'm, I'm wanting to compare to the prior year.
Uh, I don't, let me, I'll have to get that.
Okay. We were, well, we were twenty, we were twenty-seven six total.
Twenty-seven.
Right.
And we had, uh, how much? Three?
Three, three cents.
Three of that was capital, right?
That's correct.
So it was twenty, uh, twenty, twenty-four six and then three capital and how much fire?
I, I think fire was, I'm not sure. I think it was eight-five or eight-seven somewhere.
Okay.
So our, uh, that doesn't add up. Uh, our, our total including fire was twenty-seven six, right?
Twenty-seven. Yeah, that was the total.
All right. So then we would've been at, uh, I left my calculator in my car. Nineteen.
That would've been eighteen point five.
Yeah, eighteen. Well, let's see, we were twenty
If, if you're doing nine, nine point
We were twenty-seven six plus, how much for fire? Give me the numbers now.
Nine-one.
Well, it was fire was John, you want me to run the numbers?
Now.
Uh, yeah, it was twenty, it was twenty-seven point six was our total tax rate, everything. Okay. If I'm correct. And then, uh, we had, uh, three of those pennies were for capital. So minus three? Minus three. Okay. And, uh, that gets us down to twenty-four six. Yep. And then fire was
Fire was at eight.
Eight even.
Sorry.
Make an entrance. Make an entrance.
I thought that Chevy Chase.
Municipal last year was fifteen point six one.
Fifteen point six.
Fifteen point six.
Fire was eight point nine-nine and then capital was three.
Okay.
Okay. Municipal and then fire and then capital.
Was three.
So what we're looking at going to
Mm-hmm.
is, uh, municipal twenty-three point nine.
Right.
Fire nine point
One.
one and leave capital at three.
Sam's saying four.
I've got four in the
Four, okay.
Not in here.
You put four in there. The note says three, but you put four in there.
Okay, well, that's, the capital needs to be, say, four.
Four.
Okay, so this, okay. So it's just where it says three here.
Mm-hmm.
It, it, well, the numbers that that reflect are really off of four.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then now the, um,
Then the total.
And then you got, okay. And then the one cent, um, oh, that's, you just tell us what we, what we
What's the value of pennies?
All right.
But it says the, uh,
Now, the twenty-three point nine, that includes the, on the, on municipal, that includes the new, uh, what we would have to be paying for the dam repairs?
Um, the dam repairs, that's actually the one cent on the capital. I added, I added the one cent on the capital.
Okay, but it was gonna take more than eighty, eighty-five thousand dollars a year to force it, so, or we, we would be using using the other 3 cents on capital for the dam as well?
We could. That's up to council.
Well, I was just wondering where it lands in here.
What that money is, it's going into the capital reserve fund, and it's just holding it there.
Because we don't know what our.
That's right.
We're just setting aside any bad shit.
So, our conversation with the LGC is, originally, we had the dam repairs and the hydroelectric fund, but we're trying to convince them to stay within the general fund.
Yeah.
They will accept that because we can, we can control the debt that way, either to raise the taxes to cover that debt.
Okay. So, our biggest increase, increase then, with fire is just minimal, from 8.99 to 9.1. But with municipal, from 15.6 to 23.9, that's where the bulk of this tax rate increase goes. And I, of course, speaking for me personally, I don't, I know we've got to add some money for the dam this year, but I don't see that reflected so much in what we're looking at here. This looks like just our normal annual operation of the town going up by a very significant percentage apart from the dam. Is, am I, am I right there?
Yeah. And it, that's right. That seems like the right assumption.
Yeah. Okay.
Are we possibly approaching this backwards? Shouldn't we determine what our expenses are going to be and needs are going to be before we really decide the revenue?
An agreement to pay for something, yeah.
I think, I think it's a good idea to look at this in very general terms at this point.
Right.
And know, and have an idea of where we, where we land on, and how much, as we go through the rest of it, as we go through the expense side, that we know how much, you know, we know kind of where we're starting off from.
Generally, yeah.
Because it's good, it's good to know how much you've got, how much you're willing to spend before you start spending. And that, that's my reasoning for taking a look at this side first in general terms, and then we could come back and look at it more specifically later, which we don't have a whole lot of latitude here, other than just the tax rate. You know, all the fees and different incomes we get are all pretty much fixed, except for the tax rate. We pay it.
I wanted to ask, the number you're showing for property value, what is that supposed to be? Is that what that's supposed to be? Or is there something missing there?
84 million. Look, 84 million.
In the explanation under tax rate, second line.
Little paragraph there between.
Yeah, 853 million.
Oh, that's changed. Okay. That's our property values.
That's the value.
Okay. Give me that new number, please.
853, 833, 172.
One more time, Sam.
Wait a minute. I'm sorry. I'm, it's wrong here. 842 million.
That's the number in here.
Okay.
2, I mean, 026, and I think that's 600.
Okay. So, there's a zero missing just on the.
Yeah, I wondered about that one.
Yeah. Okay.
So, 842 million, 26,660.
60.
Or 600.
600. 600.
You got it. Okay. Thanks. Yeah, I was curious.
I'll check that.
I was curious about that.
I'll check that for you.
Because using the rates that were there, and where it says tax rate, 36 cents, that would have to change to 37 under the current proposal of what he's showing here, whether he added one more to the capital.
All right. So, so.
Let me, let me check my figures, though. I don't think that municipal rate is right.
The 842 million?
No, the 23.9 cents.
Oh. Well, the numbers you had added up to 36, like you had there as a tax rate. They added up to 36, but you said you added one to capital, so that would make the total tax rate 37.
Yeah, it's actually 36, so the municipal should be 22.9.
Okay.
22.9. I'm sorry.
No problem. No.
Okay.
So, so we're staying with 36.
It's 36.
And a 22.9.
22.9.
Okay.
And fire is 9.1.
9.1.
And capital is?
4.
4.
Okay. And, and trust me, you did a great job compiling this and refining it, picking up where you did in the process. So, please don't be offended by any other questions or comments, so.
I'm not, I'm not.
So, let me, let me.
So, I don't get offended. We tried to offend him, and it didn't work. It just.
Let me ask this question, so I can get back in the context of how the proposed tax increase, the difference between what it is now, the total rate, and what the total rate, the 36 cents, is in the future. And it's a little bit different than what I think I'm hearing, or what John was just kind of where he was going. I understood from the budgets we've looked at before that the, if we just isolate the difference, which I thought was 7, we rounded it up, I guess. It was 7.7 or 7.3, and we rounded it up to, what, 8?
8.
8, okay.
8.
The way I understood that that broke down was that there was, in that increase, that there was 3 cents allocated for the anticipated $400,000 debt service payment on the dam, that it was not, this, this 400,000 was not a 1 cent add-on to whatever the capital is we now have. And so, you know, so if we had 8, and, and we were increasing, and we were taking 3 for the debt service of the dam project, that would only have left 5 or originally something less. Am I, is, is that not the case? Am I mistaken about that?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if, I know, I know the original transfer was like 306 or $9,000 transferred into the hydroelectric, and I'm not sure exactly what, what the penny.
Well, wasn't that transfer, I was going to ask you about that when we got down there, wasn't the nature of that transfer last year, when it was done? Wasn't that to cover the extra cost of the repair of the small generator? To cover the difference? Wasn't that a budget adjustment that you guys did to cover the additional expense?
That was, the generator repair actually came, it didn't come from the general fund. It came from the hydroelectric fund.
Okay.
It was a transfer from the hydroelectric reserves into the, into the capital.
But that's where I understood the big number came from, that was in, in the hydroelectric fund, that's not going to be there this, this year, and therefore is being replaced by $400,000 worth of anticipated debt service.
Okay. Yeah. So, the problem with transferring money from the, from the general fund into the hydroelectric fund is basically we can't do it. We can't transfer tax.
Right.
So, that was the original proposal. Last year, we didn't transfer any general fund money.
Into, we took it out of the reserve.
It was all taken out of the reserve. And that project is, when it started, I think it started in September 2016, and we spent almost $700,000 on that project. So, it's taking our reserves out of the hydroelectric. Basically, we don't have any left. That's one of the reasons why we want to move that debt service into the general fund. And we'll have a better idea when the debt service is due, probably next year.
Right. But, and in the, in the context of what you just said, I think the way this budget's been unfolding, I've understood that we were not budgeting the, the coverage of the anticipated debt service in the hydroelectric fund, that it was in this taxing, you know, we were looking at property tax increase, which would have put it in the general fund. And, and so, I don't think, up, even up until now, there was any, you know, any categorization of that being in the hydro fund. It was always in the tax increase. And that's where I'm saying, I thought we had, we had started out with 40, up at 40 cents, and we took, in the last hearing, which we have, we narrowed that down, and we got it down to 36 or 35 something.
That's correct.
Commissioner Cavan recommended, maybe if it's 35.3 or whatever it was, that we go ahead and round it up to 36. That creates an additional amount of discretionary funding for this year.
Such as the boom.
I mean, yeah. And we, we've already begun, you know, the year hadn't even started, and we have a list of, of what we think are no-brainer kinds of additional expense that we should have in the budget. Now, it's what it would cover.
Right.
And, and, okay, so we rounded up to 36. And I'm saying, in that 36, was the allocation of the debt service, because it wasn't in that hydroelectric fund. I heard it as 3 cents. Maybe 4. But, so 3 of whatever the increase is, we need to take that, you know, if we agree that's what it's got to be, then we need to take that 3 cents offline and deal with the difference, which is now.
Right.
5 cents.
I really thought it was more of 4 cents.
4 cents.
You've got, you've got this large debt coming up. Your payments are going to be about 400,000 a year, aren't they?
Yes.
All right. So, that's, that's 4 and 1/2 cents right there, because you get 83,000.
84, yeah.
84 times 4.
Yeah. So, that's 4.
That's 3.
That's 4.
But it's over 4, just for debt service.
Just for debt service.
One loan. So, that's where the 4, 4.5 of this is already gone.
And we, and we've talked about the possibility of isolating that in the tax bill, showing that that's exactly where that money's going. And then, if we can transfer it to the hydroelectric fund, we would do that. If we have to handle the debt service in a different way out of the general fund, we would do that. We'll get to the answer of that with the. The LGC. Right? Okay. So, on the part that's left, let's say it's 4 point, it's, say 4.5. One penny, I know, in this budget, is, is, at least one penny is going to the position of the Parks and Rec director.
Right.
Salary and benefits, right? So, we can take, that penny is in, is in there. And so, we can strip that out of there. And it seemed to me, we also, I'm not, I'm not ruling on whether it's in or it's out. I'm just saying, right now, it's in there. So, a penny of this additional increase is, is this Parks and Rec director, okay? I also recall that we got the road report, right?
Yes.
And we recognized that we were, we needed additional funding for the roads. And I think we put at least a penny in there. It's 175. We put at least a penny in there for the road.
Right.
Increased road renovation. So, take those 2 pennies out. So, where I'm going with it, John, is, is, you know, we're shrinking down as to what is really an increase in the normal operating budget. And frankly, as I went through here, I didn't see big increases, right?
And also, also for David and Public Works, it's going from a part-time to a full-time position. So, there's another.
Yeah. There, that, that's, that's the point. If, if you, if you look now at the percentages of increases.
This is not that, what?
They're, overall, aren't that great. But then, when you, we need, we need to break it down, and, and for 2 reasons. One is, we need to break it down to show folks where their money for the dam is going. Most of that tax increase is going to be for the dam repairs. And it's not going to be, really, when you look at it, the number, the property values we have here is not, is, is earth-shaking as a lot of people would like for everyone to believe. It's very manageable, is the word I'm looking for. All right? And then, the other thing is that, and I know I've mentioned this before, I don't mean to belabor it, but I do think that this time right now, it bears repeating, is that when we did the, the, the last increase we did, and we said, you know, Chris sent the memo out, this is going to be for all these capital improvements. Okay, yeah, fine. They were for the capital improvements, but the money we had been spending for capital improvements, it's just a matter of course, kind of went away. So, it really, as a net, didn't increase capital improvements that much. And we need to make sure that's corrected. So, we need to put a capital number in here that's really reflective of what we're going to do with capital. We need to put a number that really matches with the dam, just like we have with the fire department, and people can look at their tax bill and say, and, and kind of break it out. And, and it would be, you know, since the police department is another big expense, and, and everybody's supportive of, I think, with everybody I've talked with, the consensus is, just like I think that we'd rather have one policeman, two, or too many, or two too many than one not enough. We, we want to make sure that we're covered there, because we have such a, by comparison, such a safe community, and they do such a good job. I think it might, would be a good idea, since we've got fire as a line item, put police department as a line item, and, as well as the dam and capital improvements. And I think it just gives, because nobody's going to look at it in the detail that we do, but that gives them just a little bit more detail, and they'll buy in a little bit better. Does anybody agree with me on that?
Well, I agree that we, we need to show that capital breakout, but from what I recall, with regard to the county and the actual notices that go out, that we could only have 2 lines. And do we have to pay for a third line?
Is that correct?
Well, that's, that's, that's our software issue.
Right.
So, I don't know if, if there's an extra charge for a third line, or if they can do it or not.
Did we, did we do an individual mailing?
That would be on another.
That we would do in this important, this important year of, of expenses, you know, we want you to understand, we're not able to put this detail on your tax bill, but we want you to understand why, why it's the way it is, and where that money's going. And just send out a separate bill.
And we could do it once, or, or try to, or check with the tax, county tax office, if they would allow us a third line, and tell us it would cost how much versus the mailing.
Versus the mailing, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I agree with John's point, that we should be able to do that.
Because just from what we discussed, for 7 cents, and then we still got dredging, we've had to maintain an increase. Out of all this, with what we're doing also on projects, we ain't got a penny that we're, basically, any kind discretionary to it. So, you got 84,000 bucks.
And I know we haven't gotten to the discussion of the expenses, but I found one in here that may be a $100,000 error.
Okay.
Which is not good.
Go the wrong way.
But, and I was going to get to that when we got down through it, but quickly, let me.
Are we going to expenses now?
Yeah. Well, if, I mean, we're talking about the tax rate, that would affect the tax rate.
Another, another, when you look at this report, if you can just, there's a account at the bottom of each department.
Yeah, right. Yeah, right.
It says, uh,
The percent of increase.
Yeah, the percentage, you take a hundreds of, um,
Forty-one percent increase.
Yeah, forty-one. So you could go down every line and see what the increase is in those departments.
Yeah.
Just go to the very bottom on that one.
Well, I, I mean, uh, it, it, so what, what's our preference? Do we, do we wanna plow into the expenses now or John, do you wanna, are we okay with the general discussion of where the revenue tax increase is and then we can get down to the expenses and just make sure we got enough money to pay for all this?
Yeah, I think we got a grip on that. I think, I think that, uh, I'll just make one other comment. Chris, uh, uh, brought back, when he did it, did an excellent job, an excellent sales job of, of selling the community on the, uh, capital improvements. And knew for that and how that went. That was, that was a good, a very persuasive piece that he, that he sent out. And I just would want it, when we get to that point, the less, uh, maybe as a group, we can reduce to, to writing the topics that we would want hit in something like that. You know, we got the, uh, you know, what our capital improvements are with the dam and,
Yes.
And, uh, and maybe we can start an out, or at least just give, uh, Shannon, uh, an outline to, to go with on that and to, uh, maybe put together something. It's, it's a real balancing act. You get too much information on that, you know, you, it's easy to get fogged over and it, but you, but you want enough, so.
Let me give you a good example, is just look on your expenses on administration.
Uh-huh.
You're, you're looking at, uh, the salaries, fifteen percent increase. You look on professional services, which is your auditing and such, there's a twenty-four percent increase just this year on that.
Which, which?
Where, where's that money come from?
The one you're looking at.
Uh, page one on this.
Four one three, one oh three. Account four one three, one oh three.
Right, look at, look at your administrative costs. I'm seeing twenty-five percent increase in, in, uh, group insurance. I mean, that's where these costs just keep bumping up. But that's, that's a huge number when you go up twenty-five percent.
Yeah, you remember, we beat that around in, in the meeting and we ended up, uh, saying that, um, okay, we'll go with, I forgot what the number was, but we gave them the numbers. So you have this much increase, if you can't, uh, Sam, shop it out to somebody else. And they took our price, is that right, Sam? Okay, and, uh, on the audits, that's something that we, we typically stay with the same auditing firm for, how many years?
About five years.
Five years, and we're getting near the end of that now.
Next, we finish up this one, we're gonna go out and get the next.
I, I ran this same thing by, uh, a CPA that does audits. And he said he thought this audit was, that this price was fat, that, uh, that, that bidding it out, we could, uh, we could reduce that. So, uh, do you agree? I mean, you were, yeah.
But it's just, I mean, health insurance, it just keeps going. We, we just, we've lived on vapors ever since I've been on this council, six and a half years. We have lived on vapors. Now we got all these huge projects, we have to budget for them and pay for them. And I just, I'd rather be a half a cent high and not have to go back next year and worry about than to come up and we say, well, we ran short, we keep pulling out of the fund balance. Which every time I see that, I just flinch. It's pull out of fund balance, pull out of fund, I'm sorry, the kitty goes dry after a while.
That, that would be, that was another question I had and I, I might've overlooked it in here. Do we have our, our, a list of where our fund balances are?
Um, I can get one.
Okay, and the comparison, uh, cause that's.
Where we started and where we left.
Yeah, yeah, that, that would, that would be good to have, so that's a good point.
I just hate, keep pulling money out of the savings account.
Right.
Alright.
That's all I got.
Okay, well, one, one thing that I would add before I forget to do this, um, comment, a lot of the really big ticket things in here are these big projects and the debt service. And, and we've, as far as I know now, uh, Sam, we, we're making the assumption that we're, I'll use the term paying cash for everything. In other words, we're, we're paying for this and, and, and the debt service is based on some, uh, financing vehicle wherever we, we can get it. But basically, we're paying, uh, we're paying for it, okay? So now, in the case of the dam, we're in possession of two, uh, engineering, uh, qualification statements and, and with project approach. And in both cases, those consultants have advocated, one of the first things we should do is to look at, and they've identified, uh, I think four federal assistance programs, they think, uh, may qualify, uh, we may qualify for, uh, the dam. So, um, you know, we don't know at this point if we can get that. But if we do, I mean, there could be, there could be substantial reductions in, uh, debt service, uh, payments for, for that kind of, um, assistance. But we don't know. Uh, we, we're, we budget a hundred fifty thousand in here for some engineering on the project at the thing. Um, and that's really at this point, all we have. But that's another area where, uh, uh, you know, multimillion dollar project, we, we could, if we're, if we could, uh, we could cover a tremendous portion of that with a grant or assistance, right?
Well.
Yeah.
So all those things we work on, but, but right now, we're making a very conservative assumption for this budget that we, we don't have that in the budget.
We have to move forward, assuming we don't get it.
Right.
And then if we do, we might have some extra money for roads or, or, or to put back in the reserves.
Okay, on our sewer project, we've paid what, over a million dollars, Sam? Where'd that money come from?
Comes out of the, the water and sewer.
And we're paying debt service on that right now?
We, we paid, paid that ourselves out of our book money.
Yeah, that, that came out of the end of the big sewer and, and twelve points that we did.
The loan, yeah.
So that's.
We're paying debt service.
Is that fund balance increasing?
Came out of our pocket.
We paid cash.
Yeah, that wasn't out of the loan.
It wasn't out of the loan.
I don't think so.
It was until, um, it is, um, from the time we stopped paying our green line expenses.
So it is increasing from that point? Alright, so when.
But we pay cash for that right now, haven't we?
Yes.
Million bucks.
We, now we're, we're, let me find the right number here. We are transferring in our water and sewer. We are, uh, transferring a, a little over four hundred and fourteen thousand back into the fund balance in the water and sewer this year.
This year, was seventeen, eighteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen nineteen.
Okay. And we've got about, you know off the top of your head about what we have in there now?
As far as reserves?
Yeah.
Um, we're, we're right around a hundred thousand.
Okay.
Way down.
Yep. Okay, well, I didn't mean to get us off track, I just thought I would lose that, my thought.
We, we might be more than that, but that's taking into account our, the money we fronted for the, the green line. If that makes sense.
Right, that's why I was addressing.
If we get that money back, then that'll bring it back up.
Okay.
And how much did we front, Sam?
It's close to a million dollars.
So there may be a million dollars coming back to that account?
Hopefully.
Yeah. And where's that money right now? That?
Where, where's the money?
Yeah.
It's, it's in, uh, brown and, uh, it's in the engineer's pockets, that's where the money is.
Okay, so that's money for engineering that will not have, that will not have to be done.
No, it was done.
It was done.
It has no value.
We're starting over now.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, that's gone.
Yeah.
It's gone.
Yeah. Alright, I'm, that's where I thought we were.
Yeah.
But we're getting ready to spend another six to seven hundred thousand on the new contract for the new site.
Yeah.
There's more cash outlay there that's gonna have to be put out.
Yeah, but as, even if that, if, if the numbers, tell me if the numbers are, if I'm right on the numbers that we have so far on the, on the sewer system. Wasn't it around thirteen to fourteen million?
Mm-hmm.
Which was what we had allocated for the green line.
Mm-hmm.
So, since we really had budgeted that before and we've got the loan for it, uh, we have the payments budgeted in here and, and last year, because all that comes out of, uh, inquiry. That's paid for with the increase to the water and sewer bill. So that part is covered and really doesn't need to be included here at all, right? Cause that's a wash in the, uh, water and sewer fund.
Only thing I wanna point out is we have to front this money and we won't get reimbursed until when? Year, two years? This money's out of our pocket for at least one to two years.
Well, it.
Plus the new engineering costs.
Right, I, I understand that the money is, you know, a dollar's a dollar, but, um, it's, it's spent for, as, as far as for the budget we're considering, that money is already covered in our water and sewer, um,
Rates.
Rates, yeah, there, the, we, we increased the rates enough to cover that.
Right, but what you gotta worry about is cash flow because you're down to a hundred thousand dollars right now in the balance.
Right.
These engineers are gonna be writing you a bill here for one to two hundred thousand dollars in the next sixty days probably. So we better watch that cash flow, that their engineering will outrun the revenues.
Yeah.
And there's no place to get it out of the general fund reserve after that. And I think we'll end up hitting that at some point.
What do you think, Sam?
Yeah, timing's everything.
Yeah.
The problem is.
How is our timing, cause you would know that and I.
Well, I'm not really sure where we're at with the, the new, uh, with the new.
Engineering.
Engineering.
Utility board's meeting with them on, uh, Wimste on that.
I, I've seen the revised budget, that's what they're gonna look at. There, there's, uh, it, it's broken in tasks. The initial task is gonna be to update or redo the engineering report that rec, had recommended the green line, it needs to be updated. Uh, that'll be the first tranche of, of funding that we need for engineering services and, and you, you may be right. The order of magnitude of the number, I think you're right.
I think we're gonna be cash.
Couple hundred thousand dollars.
There's, there's nothing in this budget on debt service for sewer, for sewer system replacement. It, it shows that for the current year, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-seven, but then it has thirty-year loan, zero percent interest, payment date questioned. And there is nothing for the eighteen nineteen budget in here.
Right.
Nothing at all.
And that's what my concern is. I just see us come out with a short cash flow. When these engineers put out this report, I mean, you know, seven hundred thousand dollar contract, they're gonna build that seven hundred thousand in the next year. Because, oh, they have to be done and submitted to the state.
Under sewer.
So it's like this million, we spent a million dollars in about eighteen months, as I recall, right?
Or water.
Alright, so you see where I'm coming from, Shannon?
Yeah.
I wanna be proactive for that.
Right in here.
Yeah.
I see in six or eight months coming in here and saying, we need three, four hundred thousand dollars out of the reserves to pay the engineering bills.
And then now eighteen nineteen, there's nothing for debt service, so.
Debt service, the timing of the debt service, debt service is usually semi-annual payments. They do through the, the state, it's usually semi-annual.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm, I'm wondering when those debt, when that debt will actually be due.
You talk, I'm, I'm, I'm talking from the engineers.
Well, I, I, I understand.
But the money to pay the engineers and the loan.
It all, yeah.
I don't know, we don't, have we got?
Engineers will be paid first and then later.
How much have we received from the state for that, uh, one point one million? Nothing, and that's been eighteen months. You see where I'm coming from?
It's a cash flow issue.
Cash flow.
But if that, yeah.
I just, I want this council and town manager to be aware of this. We could end up with a half million dollar more for this sewer project before the end. I'd say, this is, I'll say by March of next year or after Christmas, these engineers will build out at least seventy percent of that invoice on whatever the final contract is, which will be close to half a million dollars.
Uh-huh.
We don't have a half million dollars in the account.
Yeah, well, well, where would we be at that time, Sam? Cause you, you know, you said we've done taking money out of it for now, but it's, that we're building back in.
We're building back in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just wanting.
I just have to look at it.
Okay.
It's all in the building.
Let me, would you, could you come here a minute? Let me show you one thing, uh, Stephen just brought our attention. What page are you on, so we can all see it?
Page four.
Under expenditures?
Under, yeah, four, four expenses, uh,
Under water.
Under debt service.
Water and sewer.
Uh, six thirteen.
Okay.
What page are you on?
Right here, four, four.
Yeah. The second set of, third set of papers in there.
Yeah.
You got one through eleven.
What we got?
And then you got, uh, one through four, second set of papers.
Yeah, that's the debt service for, uh, this does.
Yeah, that we put in there, but we had it in.
Is that something, is it somewhere else in here or is that something we need to add?
Well, again, that's, I'm, I'm not really sure the timing of that debt service.
Okay, so you think that, is that one of the things you think will be a wash?
Well, I, I think, I think if, if anything, we might have one payment this fiscal year.
That's us?
Six thirteen.
No, no, it'd be half that.
Okay, so that's two, alright.
If, yeah, if that, that, I don't think it'll hit, but it would be half if it does hit.
If it does hit, it would be half, but you don't think it?
I don't think it will hit this, 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 this coming fiscal year.
Okay.
I think it'll, but we'll have to, we'll have to budget that, probably that amount next year.
Okay.
It's a timing issue.
Yeah, yeah, Bob's got an excellent point. That, you know, it's, if, if, if the money's gonna be, if we know we're gonna need that money, you know, let's make it part of the budget now moving forward. And it's okay if it goes in reserve, we'll all just reserve for that and then, uh, uh, but that, well, since that, that comes from the, uh, water and sewer, it has to, it can only come from the water and sewer. We can't, that's right, we can't budget that. We bet, that has to, we can't, uh, we can't do that at all. That, that strictly comes from the rates. So that has to be handled through the.
You'd have to borrow.
Through that fund, yeah, we'd have to borrow on that. Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So that, that really doesn't need to be in the budget right now.
You're gonna have to find it somewhere when the bill comes in though. I mean, the engineer's gonna hand you a bill and you're gonna be two hundred thousand short. We're gonna have to borrow it from our savings.
Right, my point isn't that we don't need the money, it's just where it come from. That, that is why the, the hash comes from the.
I'm just saying, the till's gonna be empty, we may have to take it from general fund to cover it until we can.
Have to do a loan.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just.
Would it be a good, I mean, I don't know what you've done in the past, uh, in terms of, uh, financial management of the town, but most of the businesses that I've been, um, involved in, the, the old saying, the cash is king. Businesses go out of business not because, uh, their income and expense statements upside down is because they weren't able to come up with the cash when they needed it to pay bills. And I'm not sure, now having spent five or six months here now, that we don't have the same, uh, operating requirements, uh, even though we can't go out of business and, you know, somehow or another. But I, I would think, we always did a cash flow projection.
Yeah, monthly cash flow chart.
Monthly cash flow projection. I don't know if we do that, but that may be something you should look at, Sam.
With these projects, I would highly recommend.
Yeah, and now we're in the project thing, you're right. We're in the big numbers now with these projects.
Cause right now, you're at one point one, you're gonna be out with engineering in the next ninety days, about another hundred to two hundred. So you're gonna be at one point three, one point four million out of your cash flow.
But in here.
And like I said, you know, you're gonna take six months to a year to reimburse anything.
Something or something.
I just, I think we got a cash flow issue right now.
Yeah, and if we do, then Sam could, we can manage that by short-term bridge financing, you know, and then that's available.
Yeah.
Uh, to, but that was another LGC issue that we, right, that we would need to cover with them before we could do that, so.
Be proactive, not reactive.
How have we covered that in the past, Sam? With the, the cash flow?
We've had one of these for the general fund, uh, one time that I remember.
Uh-huh. From the, from our, like, lower.
Yes.
General fund.
And we have to give permission to do that?
No, we have to have a, uh, you do it through an ordinance or a, uh,
Resolution.
Resolution.
Yeah, okay.
I've got a question.
I appreciate it, I just want us to, Chris.
One, one of, Sam, we talked about, um, taking the, um, uh, budget for the commercial center and the restrooms and basically creating a separate project ordinance for those. Um, so, next year is when we plan to complete those. So as far as the commercial center, you know, we could be looking at three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand dollars to complete that, it's probably south of that, and then you're looking at the restrooms, you're looking at, uh, you know, the bids came back in a hundred ninety-four thousand, that's high, I think, but you're looking at probably a hundred and thirty thousand, forty thousand for the restrooms. So based on our cash flow situation, um, have we taken those into consideration?
Well, the, the restrooms originally were a loan.
Okay, that's right.
That would kinda wash out.
Yeah, we got under debt service there, we got ninety-four hundred programmed as debt service for the restrooms, I found that, but, but, uh, last year there was ninety-five thousand in there for those restrooms, and that was considered gonna be a loan for it to get it done.
The only thing I would, I would say is, if we can't get it done for what we've borrowed, we can't get it done.
But we haven't borrowed it yet, so.
Okay.
I, I, I assume the project will be, we'll, we'll get a figure, then we go off the loan, and eventually we'll have to pay.
And do that under a project ordinance.
Okay.
Correct?
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, it, could we possibly now go, just go, go into the expense thing, kinda go down there, Steven has, I think, a, a one issue, others have.
Got more than one, actually, but.
Are we okay with that, John?
Well, just, you wanna take from, uh, the, from, maybe from the page one, and just, just go down.
Yeah, I was gonna go through it section by section.
I think we should do that.
I mean, I'm prepared to go right in order.
Yeah, but I think.
That won't take forever, you would go through there, okay?
Well, if I may then, uh, starting with the commission section.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, account two, one, five, and two, one, six are showing under, and, let me, let me back up. I compared this to the original budget that was presented to us, and then also compared it against previous reductions and additions we made, uh, to make sure everything was accounted for. So what we're seeing here, under, next to the last column, final budget.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the nine, first ninety-two fifty is fifty dollars less than what we had approved earlier, and the twenty-seven fifty is fifty dollars less than what we approved earlier. I'm okay with those two reductions, if y'all are. Uh, the twelve thousand is a new figure, that was not previously in there, and I think that that's in lieu of the, uh, civil engineer position we've been looking at. Uh, but I don't know why it's showing under commission, I guess it's okay, it doesn't matter.
I had marked that very thing, why, why did we put that on the commission?
I mean.
I, I put that in as a placeholder, um, Kevin and I were talking about maybe having a, a dam consultant.
Right, yeah, okay, that, that's what that is, yeah, I, I can cover that, so, um.
Yeah, look at your six ninety-one, dam repair.
We, we will be meeting, uh, later this afternoon with Dr. Marks, and the purpose of that, um, it has come, it has come to light now that we are facing, uh, some very, uh, extreme deadlines, uh, with respect to the dam safety engineer office and their requirement or demand for certain submittals, uh, in order to, you know, keep us on the right side of things as we go forward with the renovation projects. Uh, for the most part, the things they're, they're now, they have asked for as of May twenty-second, uh, really, uh, are not, I don't classify them as, uh, relating to the design documents, they're really coming back and saying there's some additional, uh, study items, I would classify, that you need to, you need to do and you need to submit to us, so we're, we will be continually comfortable with your operation of this dam.
From a safety, right?
From a safety standpoint, while you, you know, go forward, and they're saying, uh, some of the things we're asking for could influence, uh, the renovations, or at least the sequence of construction of the renovations, so that's a new, that's something new in the last thirty days, I guess, um, and we need, I, my assessment of it is, uh, the first deadline in, of the things they're asking for is August the first. So what I've concluded is, there is no way that we'll be able to bring our new engineering, uh, consultants on board that we're in the process of selecting in time for us to, um, uh, allow them to respond by August the first, and I do not believe that there's gonna be an extension, because these two items they're asking for, uh, is in, in their words, in advance of hurricane season, so I don't think we could argue with a delay, so what I've.
Which is already started.
It's started.
So what I've asked for is, um, and, and I think what Sam's got here, twelve thousand dollars is, and I'll be coming to you, you'll see it on the agenda for the twenty-sixth special meeting, is authorization to hire, uh, not, not to hire, but to extend Dr. Marks' contract, which is the study, uh, in order to cover those two items, and that's what this money is, is for, so, and I think it'll be spent.
To its, we'll get a bill.
And I'm okay.
If that's the best place to put it.
Where does it go?
Well, he's gonna be a primarily a consultant to us on it, so maybe it should be under the commission.
I, I.
I'm fine. I, I, I just noted it was new.
Yeah, and that's what it's for, and that's, I'm glad, I didn't realize.
So I'm, I'm fine with those changes, the way they occurred, uh, if you move to the next section, administrative, uh, and actually for all the personnel salaries, I don't know why we're doing a two and a half percent COLA when the federal COLA was two percent. That doesn't make sense to me.
And I agree, I think being financially responsible, COLA's exactly what that's supposed to be, is whatever that percentage is, report saw, was exactly two, two percent.
Has, has nothing to do with performance, strictly a COLA, and, and, uh, I think we should go to two percent throughout.
Yeah.
According to my preliminary email with Sam, and he sent all of you that email, it'll net about a ten thousand dollar change over the year.
Right, and the problem is not just this year, if you run that out ten to twenty years, it just keeps enhancing, and that's why it's so critical to.
And I had nothing else on that page, did anybody else have anything else on it?
No, that's, it's just.
Wait a minute, well, before, well, why don't we, we agree, I think we're all pretty much in agreement on that, just, just change that to, uh, two percent?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I agree with that, two percent.
Sam, where's the two point five percent come from? What data did we have that?
The data I have is two point two, it was, it was a figure, I think, that Ron just threw in.
Okay.
I don't think it was tied to.
Tied to a specific benchmark somewhere.
Alright, so, uh, we all agree then, basically, on that, and, uh, nothing else on that page?
Do you wanna?
I had, I had nothing else on that page.
Does anybody else, and we'll just do every, if somebody else has got anything on that page? I don't have anything, I'm just, let's, let's cover them all as we go page by page.
Okay, so we go in next, uh, section?
The next page, I have nothing on.
Okay, the next thing, only thing I wanna comment is, please, sometime in the next year, let's see if we can get these calls down on all these central services. We're spending almost two thousand dollars a week on these computers and tech services, there's surely gotta be a way to get the telephone and tech services under a hundred thousand dollars a year. I'm just saying, we need, need to test, Shannon, if you would, uh, that's my comment there, I just, two thousand dollars a week, I'm sorry, it's just.
This is under central services.
Central service.
Can, can I just quickly go back up, you bounce through, um, uh, Sam, line item, uh, up to top of that second bit, three fifty repairs and, and maintenance building, is, um, you know, it's, I'm aware that we have some issues, uh, with the police station, with the roof and the door issue, water intrusion, now it's, it's, it's really impacted more than it should, and my, the history of that I've heard is that we've been trying to get that leak just addressed for a while, and for whatever reason, it's gotten, uh, delayed or postponed, is that, is that here, where is, is that in the budget somewhere?
David's got an answer.
That is, that is the line item you.
That is that line item?
That is that line.
Is that a sufficient amount of money?
I don't, I don't know about the door, I haven't received a, a estimate on the door.
See, I think this is just a roof repair, and somebody told me, I mean.
That porch over there, and the porch I hear beside of Shannon's, as well, was, was both in that quote, uh, that we got, but the door was not included in his quote. I, I think that quote was eleven, something, something like that, I'm, I'm.
Kat told me that we were, we, we were waiting on somebody, uh, to come in and, uh, I, and, and give us a quote for the door, we don't have, I don't think that we have that yet.
I don't.
Yeah, but anyway, I just would draw a circle around that number, because I think we're gonna need some more funds in that account to cover the actual, uh, repairs that are needed, and, and I think they should be done.
Well, even, even the door and door frame, I think, is not gonna be that much.
No, it shouldn't be, but there may be framing, I mean, there, there, obviously there's water damage to that wall, so it could be more than just a door.
I'll do what you're saying, you're gonna spend it all on this repair and have nothing left.
Right, so I'm just saying, uh, draw a circle or something around that, and let's.
So, so the twelve five might change.
Might change, yeah.
The only thing that I would add would be that, uh, it just recently come to our attention through Chief Humphries, that, uh, they had HVAC folks out to take a look at their compressors, and it looks like they're on their last leg, they feel like they can babysit those through until the spring of next year, but there may be, uh, maybe looking at a replacement, because these are R twenty-two HVAC units, which takes the old refrigerant, and so that's going away, and, uh, these are old, uh, units anyway, so I think the quote to completely replace those two is eleven thousand dollars, and we do know, think based on what Sam was saying, we've got similar issues with, uh, the units there at the ABC store. But those folks could be moving that, could buy some time on that one, so, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay, alright.
So, uh, I had nothing on page two, so again.
That's all I had.
Okay, so page three?
Okay, uh, under page three, at the top section, line three twenty-four, which is the, under the police department, during our discussion on May the thirtieth, the chief agreed to reduce that figure by seventeen hundred dollars, uh, which was the one software program, he said he does not use regularly, and that seventeen hundred reduction is not shown here.
That's where eight thousand is now.
The eight thousand should reduce by seventeen hundred to sixty-three hundred. Uh, so.
Okay, good.
And I had nothing else on that page.
Well, I have a question on, on the, uh, line item two twelve fuel, I noticed, uh, going, and I think we had this discussion earlier, I just forget what, what was said about it, but, um, you know, the cost of gasoline has been steadily rising this year, and I'm, I'm not hearing any reason why it's gonna come back down at the moment, and, and Chief, you, uh, what, so our actual budget, uh, for next year is, is a little less than, uh, the budget we forecast for this year.
No, I see an increase.
Twenty.
Two twelve.
Oh, no, I, I, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry.
So twenty-one, and it's got, and now it's twenty, so is, is there, I mean, I don't wanna.
I think we tweaked it down basically on, on our history, if you look at our history.
Usually came about a four or five thousand dollar buffer, and, and an effort to, when it was brought back to me by Ron.
Okay.
Cut some more, I just cut a small amount.
Small, small amount?
Just based on the buffer we kept over the past few.
But you're okay with the, with this, I just wanna make sure.
Mr. Weber has said he didn't feel comfortable, which I'm.
Yeah, and that one we left as it was.
Feel like you have an adequate buffer there.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanna make sure, we don't, okay, thanks, that's it for me. Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, so we're on page four, right?
Yeah, page four, uh, go down to Public Works.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, well, salaries, we, we have a salary adjustment there, uh, and so we need to adjust all those other figures accordingly, and if you're not aware of that, I think Shannon's familiar with it.
You're talking about the total getting the two percent?
Pay on call or?
No, 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 there was a salary adjustment in Public Works.
Right, that's correct.
During our close session. Remember?
Yes.
Okay, and that needs to be reflected in that total for that department and, and all the other benefits accordingly.
One Anita just discussed.
And that's also showing the COLA's still a two point five percent in that.
Well, oh, yeah, all of them.
All that'll change, right?
I'll tweak on that, okay, good point.
And, uh, that's all I had on that page.
Okay, anybody else?
Just what Anita had, so that's all.
Okay, alright.
Right.
Page five then?
Okay, uh, yeah, on page five, going under, uh, wait a minute, yeah, page five, going under three fifty-one.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're talking repairs there, twelve thousand, maintenance and grounds, and it says boardwalk may take, might take some expense, and Commissioner Cameron has a story to share regarding the boardwalk from yesterday.
Yes, I've got a, a friend that sent me a, a text, it has a picture of her hand, and when she fell, she's there in fifty, she's walking the boardwalk, trips and falls, and nails, she says, are sticking up, and it ripped the whole inside of this meat out, tearing up her hand, ended up at, uh, the hospital with it, she's not threatened to sue us, but she says, then they started looking, there's nails sticking up everywhere on that boardwalk, beside the uneven deals, we need to have somebody go through that boardwalk and spend some time, but drive those nails back down, and then, of course, replace bad boards, but it's a, it's a very feisty picture she sent me there, she, uh, she turned white when a neighbor tried to give her, uh, assistance, and, uh, she got pale, and they ended up having to take her to the hospital, 'cause she couldn't.
And, and we talked previously and mentioned it, uh, were we going to try and paint it or do anything to it prior to the WIG? Uh, we discussed that previously, and, and if we do, I'm sure twelve thousand's not near enough.
That'd be awful.
I wouldn't even bother to brush it.
I think if we weren't looking at such increases already, yeah, but with the increases we're looking at, I, I just think that's a, something that we could pass on, but now on the nails that Bob was mentioning.
You're right.
Would it be, uh, would it, would it make sense to go in and pull all the loose ones for screws in there?
That's what we've been trying to do with the place and stuff, but a lot of those boards have been nailed down so many times that.
Will hold a screw?
They're in the strass, I mean, if they're constantly, that whole boardwalk out there.
Will screw hold it?
Huh?
Will screw?
Will they screw?
Will a screw, in place of a nail, hold?
Use a deck screw?
Yeah.
Uh, or you got too many holes, you can't even find a place to put the screw?
Yeah, that, that thing is in bad shape, from one end to the other, and that, it is constantly, those boards are walking and moving, and nails are working their way up throughout the whole thing, all of it.
And, and, and we've talked, and there's money in here on that Marina and Boardwalk project, but that's only to the beach, that doesn't cover anything from the beach around by the building, uh, so.
On the boardwalk.
That's more important, that new project underway, because, but anyway, I just wanted to bring that out, we, we just, the lady, she's a kind lady, she just, uh, she just ripped her hand up.
Do you know a specific area where she had failures?
I can find out for you, let you know.
David, can?
Just look for the skin.
Can I just ask a question on, I guess this is under, under your, uh, I know the, the, Melanie and all, they take care around the dam, uh, operations building, the other end side of the dam, is that on a regular schedule?
On the far side?
On the far, on the, on the north side, 'cause it, it looks pretty, and I don't know if it's on a regular schedule to do that or not.
I don't, I don't think so, I know that, over on Dean's side, but I don't think so.
Well, I think that's something we'd look at, 'cause it looks, it looks pretty crappy right now, especially. All, all that, that nice wrought iron fence we had to put up through there, you know, the weeds, grass growing up around it and stuff, we, I don't know if it's last year before we put some gravel over there and stuff, but, uh, that, that's a pretty important reflection, I think, on, on, on us, on that side as well. I just noticed it this morning.
Okay, anything, we're on page five, anything?
Uh, right, under sanitation, uh, the grand total is up twenty-four hundred, uh, since the original presentation, and, uh, I didn't know why, well, it shows a two hundred dollar a month increase in garbage pickups.
That's twenty-one.
Okay, but then, then you go down under tipping fees, uh, that's down two hundred dollars, and it shows a note, Vicky Neeland, two hundred a month increase.
Yeah, that, that needs to be taken, that, that note needs to be taken out, I put it in the wrong, wrong spot.
Okay, so, so why did we drop the two hundred on the tipping fees? I thought tipping fees had been increased.
I, I, I just, I actually, I just left it at the same amount as last year, based on our history, we've, we've come in at.
Yeah, but what we had in our recommended budget was forty, uh, and that's, that's Yeah, but what we had in our recommended budget was forty, and that's two hundred less than that, is what I'm saying, so. I mean, I'm okay, if that covers it, I'm okay, leave it last.
I'm pretty confident it covers it. The contractual service probably went up from what Ron had. Basically, he had, he had taken her, or taken Neeland's increase out, but that was something they're asking for, a two hundred dollar increase.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to note that that's higher than what we had originally seen.
Right, and I adjusted it from what Ron had in there.
Okay.
Based on her increase.
Well, I'm okay with both of those changes, everybody else is.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Then under Economic Development, line six thirty-one, this is only an admin thing, but there's a reason for it. Originally, there was a line six thirty-two, Chamber of Commerce was six thirty-one, and six thirty-two was EDA. It's now combined, and the way it reads with the note, it has twenty thousand EDA. That was a contentious donation of ten thousand dollars a year for up to five years, and each year being dependent on the previous year, and whether or not we felt we were getting our money's worth for that. So I would like to keep that line six thirty-two EDA separate.
And that's actually ten, right?
And that's actually ten thousand dollars a year.
And then six thirty-one would be ten.
Would be ten, that's for the chamber support.
Okay, I can do that.
Right. So the EDA here, this twenty thousand's ten. Really should have been ten anyway. Right, but that's a separate line, six thirty-two EDA.
I see, yeah.
Right, ten.
I got you. Yeah, that makes sense.
And then that's all I had on page five.
Alright, page six then. Anybody else on page five before I want to talk?
I'm sorry, anybody? Okay. Okay, you're showing five thousand under salary part-time, one oh two.
What number are you?
One, Community Development, page six, line one oh two. Of course, that was fourteen five minus ninety-five, balance is at five, and that's for the clerk. You showed the twenty-five minus twenty-five, the next line, one oh three, which was what we did. The, the next, okay, the FICA, retirement, and 401K are all down from what was originally seen, and that wouldn't have been due to that clerk, I don't think, because that was a part-time. I don't think it would have had that much effect, because example, one one oh nine is down a hundred dollars, one ten is down twenty-eight hundred from what was originally presented to us, and four oh one is down seven hundred. Don't worry about that a whole lot right now, because all of it's gonna change when you do the COLA change numbers anyway. But there was something else taken out of there that we didn't originally see, or somehow or another.
Community Development going up because of transferring Clint over to that department.
Correct, that was already included.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, but it should come down some, because Shannon, our compensation will come out of a different department.
Right, but right now it's still...
Well, I didn't see the decrease in the overall salary though.
No.
So that doesn't work the way you just said it.
Well, I'm talking about per department.
I understand, yeah, but...
So Sam, the salaries for Community Development, do they reflect Clint coming in? And then, my technically vacating or moving from that to administration? Basically, the cost, my cost should be coming from administration rather than Community Development now, right?
Is that the case?
Your position would not.
So is that reflected in this?
It's reflected in your position, I guess, in your cost, but no, when...
It didn't move?
It didn't move.
Yet.
And you gotta remember, Ron's salary is still under the administrative section.
It is, it is, yeah.
Ron's is under administration, Shannon's under...
Right.
So for purposes today, Sam, is it easy for you to leave it like it is for this part, and then we come back and we make the adjustments when we get to administrative for Ron's department?
Okay. Okay, but what I wanted to point out is those decreases in those benefits, but there wasn't any change in the salary that would have caused that decrease that I could see. I just wanna bring that to your attention, so when you do the final, you can fix that stuff. And I know it'll change now even more so because of the COLA, so. So I'm not gonna fight over a particular number right here.
But you're, these are my numbers versus...
I got you, I got you. Line three ten.
I'm going with Sam's. I'm going with Sam's numbers.
Line three ten, that should have decreased two hundred dollars based on our May thirty meeting, so the correct figure for line three ten should be forty-eight hundred. Line six ninety-eight. Okay, you're showing sixteen minus six, leaving a balance of ten. The original department request was sixteen, the original recommendation presented to us on May thirty was ten, and during that conversation, Shannon agreed to the reduction of the ten, leaving that as a balance of zero.
Okay.
Okay, so that number should be zero instead of ten thousand.
Okay.
That helps. Okay, and that's all I had on that page.
Okay, anybody else have anything on that page?
No, I just scanned over the increase in that department with that ten, helps it a lot.
Yeah, and but, if I understand correctly, tell me if I'm wrong, please, a lot of the increase in this department is because of Clint's time now being charged here, and it will offset his reduction in the...
Lake ups.
Correct, yeah, and that was reflected.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so moving on to page seven.
Okay, that's Parks and Rec, and that's the department none of us have talked about while we were awaiting the draft job description, which everybody got a copy of. And of course, you heard Jim Walters' presentation at the last town council. So you know where I stand, and there's another line item at the bottom we need to talk to, but we need to get, we need to resolve this Parks and Rec director position. And the one thing Sam mentioned earlier, somehow or another, we had a part-time employee in Parks and Rec, we authorized a temporary part-time for Public Works in February at the retreat. We're now being asked to approve a full-time for Public Works, and they would lose their part-time position, the temporary. But somehow or another, the part-time for Parks and Rec got left off and excluded. That should not have happened. And Sam said at the beginning, it's there now. And I guess in the new one you gave us today, it shows that, right?
Okay, so let me make sure I understand just to that point. You had a part-time person that was the same person, but was part-time was you, and part-time was Parks and Rec, is that right? Or was it two different people?
Two different positions.
Okay, so now you changed.
Public Works had a part-time which was never filled since the retreat.
Right.
Parks and Rec had a part-time which was filled.
Okay, so you had a part-time that wasn't filled.
Yes.
And now, rather than the part-time, you're gonna have a full-time.
Full-time, right.
And Parks and Rec had a part-time that was filled.
Yes.
Okay, and that's where they are now? Okay, alright, I'm with you now.
Yeah, and originally, I was going to, as the liaison, I was going to go for a full-time for Parks and Rec this year as opposed to the part-time, but due to the other costs, I opted not to even broach that subject. So now the thing to discuss is the Parks Director.
I've spoken my piece on that also, I feel that that's probably the most important position we need in this town as far as a new position. We just have such a large area and so many responsibilities, and I really do feel like they'll be able to bring in some additional events. They'll be able to do the planning for all these parks out here that we're going to be reworking and redesigning and under the master plan and master concepts, so I just, I just believe it's necessary for our community.
I think it will eventually, I think that we have, that there's a need there, but I just don't see putting it in this year's budget. I don't think the need rises quite to that level. I understand exactly where you come from, Bob, it's just, you know...
You owe me a beer, that's all.
Right, but I think that, I think that it's, the job description, all that we saw was a, you know, pretty much a uniform job description would apply to about any town. But I was, what I was really hoping we would see more of in there is how it would pay for itself. And there, and I think we could maybe spend a little more time working on that over the next year and seeing what kind of activities a Park Director could do to offset their income, because we, the Park Directors in a lot of these other towns too, the, you know, organize the baseball, softball, and all the different summer leagues and that kind of thing that we don't have, but then we do have more trails and so forth, so.
Nature type thing.
Yeah, and maintenance required on those. But it looked to me like a lot of it was administrative that we're covering in other ways right now. And I think it's, from my perspective, my recommendation is to not do it this year and revisit it for the next, next year's budget. It's my recommendation.
One of the primary functions of that Parks and Rec Director would be an event coordinator, and which we don't have, and the more events, the more revenue. The, looking at more revenue positive type park facilities and amenities. The, you know, in addition to the trails and the park system and so on, and all we're looking at doing with the park system, that needs to be managed. And the coordination between the parks and things like PARDAS, Rutherford Outdoor Coalition, the Carolina Climbers Coalition, the State Park, surrounding communities, all that kind of coordination and stuff needs to occur, and it doesn't necessarily occur in the detail it should. The, you know, the more we want to offer park amenities to people, and the less we fight having somebody responsible for doing that, then the, I don't think we're gonna get all the great reviews and stuff on our parks that we should that will continue to draw people here, and will bring more people here. You're talking about events, that stuff like with the Chamber, with the Dirty Dancing Festival, the Limpie Ed, all the coordination of that, as well as all the actual parks and trails and maintenance and stuff. So, you know, to me, it's a necessity. Now, having said that, and I've been the one pushing this all along, having said that, I recognize the money need, so I would, I would turn to Shannon. And Shannon, as the, as the new town manager, do you think you could keep a handle on all this for the next year to save the money? And example, the other thing to consider is we have a volunteer board that actually manages, not just an advisory board, they actually manage the parks and the park system. And some of them are getting burnt out, and they really work hard and do a fabulous job.
And that's exactly where I was coming from.
Unpaid, fabulous job, and some of them are getting burnt out, because that's, should have, I mean, it should have been like a volunteer advisory board, but...
And that's why I think you saw Jim Walters speak so highly of this position, is they are burned out doing the managing of Parks and Rec, and they need some help. And that's why he spoke, and came and spoke about it. They have been running the Parks and Rec and managing this, and they just, I think they're, like Steve said, they're...
I'd like an opportunity to comment on this as the filibuster goes on here.
But a primary example is just the last two or three days, and the email exchanges with Shannon over the Buffalo Creek Park and reopening it and fixing the problem. I mean, all of that's volunteers handling that, except for the employees we pulled to do the, some of the work out there. But coordinating and all, you know, there's Larry you've been dealing with in the emails, and here's a guy working a full-time job on the side doing this as a volunteer. That's where our Parks and Rec manager and director comes into play, and that's the job they should be doing, so, okay.
Alright, you done?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so what I get from this discussion, I don't hear anyone on this council disagreeing with the need, long-term need for a Parks and Rec Director. Even John Moore's not disagreeing with that.
Even me.
Where I come from on this is, and the other part of this is, so therefore, let's say, you know, we didn't do it this year, but we recognize sooner or later, if it's not this year, it'll likely be next year, we're gonna have to have a position like this in the town, okay? So this is a pretty significant impact on a budget, it's one cent, it's at least one cent of tax. And I think going into these budget hearings, I think we all agreed that one of the things we wanna do this year is, if we're gonna do a tax increase, let's do the tax increase, let's not be doing this every year, okay? So I, my position on that is, I will go ahead and I would support funding the position and the budget this year. On the other hand, and I've not had a chance to bring this out or discuss this with Shannon yet or anyone else, I think that, I think we should take a look organizationally before we jump on an advertisement outside our staff, existing staff. Take a look at, you know, sort of the way things are restructuring a little bit in the Community Development Department, planning and zoning, let's just, you know, let's just pause for a moment and take a look at that. Recognizing we have to have a Parks and Rec Director and figure out if there are other ways to get to where we ultimately wanna go. I'm not saying there is, I'm gonna have a proposal, but if we can proceed like that without immediately trying to fill the position, which I think I'm hearing, you're good with that, Steve.
Can I have a, I have...
Your chance.
I haven't got to speak. I think we definitely have a need for a person. I'm not sure that Parks and Rec is the right title for that. And I think we have a unique position that does not fall under the general Parks and Recreation Director description. You know, I think, you know, we're not gonna have big kids programs. We don't have kids in the community to, you know, to support those kind of things, but it's more of a outdoor nature kind of position that I see with all our parks and trails and everything. I definitely think there's a need for it, but I think that that's something that's gonna have to, what, who said it? Somebody said if we put an ad out there now for Parks and Recs, we're gonna get a lot of people, we're gonna get people that aren't gonna fill what we really need for that position, in my opinion.
Right, we...
So I think that we really need to nail down what we expect that position would be, and what that position would be doing, and then, and then move into it, and do I think it's necessary? I think it's essential that we, you know, that. I think we've probably gotten ourselves into the business of some things that, as a town, we might not wish we were in with all these outside parks and, you know, long trails and all that, and maintenance and upkeep. And I agree with what you said about people getting burnt out, you know?
If I could add, my, when I first proposed this, my vision is, it's all complete parks and recreation. And our recreation assets are the lake, the golf course, the flowering bridge, the parks that we have over here, the trails, all of that is part of parks and recreation. If you wanna give it a name, a different name, nature director or whatever, that's fine. But that's all encompassing under Parks and Rec Director, and coordinating all of those assets and managing them and directing the activities of them. So not just what we see as Morse Park or Cool Creek Park, or the Nature Trail we have or Dipmit Watts. You also got Lurmont Trails being developed, you know... Uh, you also got Lurimont Trails being developed, uh, you know, uh, you, you've now got the Weed Patch Mountain and the Buffalo Creek Park. Uh, it's quite a bit, it's more than what you realize.
I, I don't disagree with what anybody has said. But I, I think we need to put more emphasis on the uniqueness of what we're looking for. Because there's nothing else like it, and it's like I said, the, the Parks and Director, uh, 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 job description I saw, I, I think needs a good bit of work.
Oh, I agree.
And, and, and we had talked, when we originally talked about it, it was, well, they would, uh, this position could bring, uh, you know, more, uh, festivals, whatever. Okay, that's fine, I agree that, that could happen, but I think that needs to be more part of the job description. I think that, I agree, really, a lot...